Okay, great, proceed. J A R, it's Black Lodge here. Roger, sir. Black Lodge. Field, what is that here?
Burden Ground, what is that here?
Crowe, Lonchar, sir.
Eddie, you're in here.
I'm in there.
Swan Road is big on here.
Oh, yeah, that's a pop one. Good luck, Mighty Field here.
Stewart, you go, Shagada, here.
We have it in Mighty Field.
Oh, Charles, good job. You have fourteen present of. I got a announcement to make in regards to Lucky. Kyle, man, said that, um, Lachu, uh, Lachu, uh, Gaya. He came in this morning and he was pretty sick. Said he has some more tests to do, couldn't make the session today. But, uh, Lachu, uh, uh, Lachu, uh, he's kind of going through a lot right now. So, at this time, I'd like to recognize Chairman Charlie Billwatt, Larry, Chikalow. Rip, Chikalow, uh, staff, all legislators, uh, Chikalow. And I got special session with this, uh, Chairman Colin, we got your advice. From where to the L R, if you want to introduce. And this time, I need a motion to review and adoption of the agenda. Motion by Conrad Stewart, second by Eric Burdenground. All in favor, raise your red hands. All abstaining. Fourteen zero zero, all in favor. Since this hour was called within two days, uh, we do have a fifteen day rule. But however we can, uh, make a waiver, bring it out to the floor within two days. So, uh, floor recognizes Conrad Stewart.
Home Speaker, Secretary, Members of the Body, Chairman, Executive. Um, at this time, allow the main motion to suspend the rules to include the L R and waive the fifteen day rule.
Uh, it wouldn't be necessarily suspending the rule, but just, uh, making a waiver for the fifteen day rule to allow it to be brought to the floor within the two day, within the two days.
Yeah, make the waiver for the, the L R to hit the floor.
Uh, do you see it? Second by Gerald Stewart. All in favor, raise your red hands. Fourteen zero zero. Okay, now we move to new business, which is legislative resolution. The Pro Tribe Legislature approving project expenditures for the Yotel After Bay Dam Hydroelectric Facility. Feasibility and engineering studies as provided in J A R fourteen dash zero six. Need an introduction. Floor recognizes Conrad Stewart.
Home Speaker, Secretary, Members of the Body, Mr. Chairman, guests, Executive Legal Counsel Bill Watt. The L R number fourteen dash. Introduced by Senator Conrad J Stewart, Black Lodge District Legislative Resolution, Taiwo. The resolution of the Pro Tribe Legislature approving project expenditures for Yotel After Bay Dam Hydroelectric Facility feasibility and engineering studies as provided in J A R fourteen dash O six.
Need a motion to give up? Yeah, Burton Ground, second by Conrad, you know, Carlson goes ahead. Proceed.
Whereas the Pro Tribe Legislature here and after legislature has the power and duty of under Article Five, Section Two A of the Pro Tribe Constitution to promulgate and adopt resolutions in accordance with the tribal constitution and federal laws for the governance of the Pro Tribe. And whereas during a special legislative session held October twenty fourth, twenty thirteen, the legislature enacted joint action resolution, J A R number thirteen dash nineteen, which was signed into law by Chairman Hong Kong to approve a loan agreement with First Interstate Bank in the amount of ten million dollars. Secured by interest from the lender and seventh settlement trust fund, the loan, for the purposes of funding land purchases, economic development projects, and paying off twenty thirteen unsecured line of credit. In such loan, in such loan closed on November first, twenty thirteen, and all required behind N O S T approvals have been obtained. And whereas pursuant to J A R number thirteen dash nineteen, the balance of the loan received proceeds after repayment of the twenty thirteen unsecured ninth credit and transaction costs for the loan have been deposited in a separate economic development account with First Interstate Bank. And whereas J A R number thirteen dash nineteen requires all future expenditure expenditures from the economic development account by approved by additional joint action resolutions. And whereas the Pro Tribe has longstanding interest in participating in the development of the hydroelectric power generation project on the Yotel After Bay Dam located two point two miles downstream from the Yotel Dam. And whereas Section four twelve B of the Pro Tribe Water Right Settlement Act, Public Law One eleven dash two two ninety one, December eighth, twenty ten, recognized the Pro Tribe's exclusive rights to develop and market the power generation on the Yotel After Bay Dam. And whereas joint action resolution number fourteen dash O six enacted in February tenth, twenty fourteen, special session authorized future project expenditures from the economic development accounts for Yotel After Bay Dam. Hydroelectric feasibility and engineering studies subject to further approval by the legislative resolution. Now therefore be resolved by the Pro Tribe Legislature in special session, Section one, the transfer of six hundred and thirty thousand from the economic development account to the Pro Tribe General Fund during the week of March nineteenth, twenty fourteen, for the purpose as described in the tax incorporated by reference document in Taiwo. Phase two, Yotel After Bay Hydroelectric Program. Section two, the full accounting of expenditures made pursuant to this resolution shall be provided to the Finance Committee of the Legislature on or before the first day of the April twenty fourteen quarterly session. In each regular session thereafter until all project funds have been spent, the accounting shall include a certified bank statement indicating total amounts of expenditures and balance remaining. Section three, the effective date of this resolution is March nineteenth, twenty fourteen, Mr. Speaker.
Let me have three minutes presentation.
Well, I just want to speak as a proponent, Speaker, um, as, as you know, um, we've been working diligently on this water settlement for quite some time and, and securing our water rights and our quantification and moving forward with the hydroelectric power plant and the power project. Right now, we have, um, the opportunity here as a, as a government, as a tribe, to secure places on the grid now with, with, um, the opportunity we had with, um, WAPA, Northwestern Energy, E P L, to, to get on the grid and, and, um, secure capacity so we can get electricity sent out to the market. We've never had that opportunity before and right now, the timing is right. And some of you all know, we've been negotiating with WAPA, Northwestern Energy, and the, the biggest thing that, that, um, we, we've been talking about is capacity on the grid. Right now, the way I look at it is if you have any form of, um, electricity that, that's going to be developed here on the reservation, whether it's solar, water, wind. If you have no place on the grid to send your electricity, it's really just sitting there and we need to secure that capacity. And right now, the Pro Tribe has the exclusive right to build this hydroelectric, um, nine megawatt power plant right there at the After Bay. And, and the timing is right with the expiration of these, these, um, agreements with WAPA and Northwestern Energy to, to try to secure capacity on the grid or to speak to the Big Horn County Co-op or Yellowstone County and enter into power, um, um, power agreement. And so, right now, these power purchase agreements are very important because Big Horn County and Yellowstone County, Yellowstone County does with Northwestern, Big Horn County gets their electricity. They get their electricity from up north in the Flathead area, so they have to pay all this transportation costs to get here. With our nine megawatt power plant that we're going to have here at the After Bay, they would have, they would have to pay for the transportation costs, it'd be more feasible and it'd be only wise for them to buy from us. And so, the timing is right and I think we ought to push forward with this and get moving as fast as we can. Once we secure these studies, then the construction can begin, then we can access those dollars. We do have twenty million dollars set aside for the, the hydroelectric power plant in the water settlement fund, the federal water settlement. We have fifteen million dollars set aside in the, the Montana contribution setup for economic development. That's a total of thirty five million. We do have some skin in the game right now. And so, we gotta get on top of this, be moving with these studies, these surveys, these assessments, and these feasibilities. And so, I urge you all to start looking at this and, and approve this so that then we can get moving forward on this as soon as possible, oh.
Thank you, any more proponents? Floor recognizes Carlson goes ahead.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Speaker, Secretary, Members of the Body, and Mr. Bill Watt, Larry, and Crowe right over there. Anyways, uh, I am a proponent of this hydroelectric development. Uh, it's been long overdue, uh, I believe the cost is forty five million, they're gonna get a forty five million dollar project. And make Gage to say by about twenty million, then from the Crowe, Crowe Bar, so about twenty million, then I'm gonna op page, you know. And maybe, uh, a good guy, and, uh, what, a good, a good guy get a big op page, you get a good, uh, feasibility studies that have, and make Paul Gatzmeyer, uh, gonna, I guess, he just. If you give God a question, right now, he will argue, well, much, the power of it, correct? And, uh, on a compact condition, they have settlement condition that gives us the right to make the go, move forward. Who can argue that, of course, now, of what, can, can we kill? And maybe, of course, it's, uh, but it's all, but it's all, uh, 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 yeah, yeah, it's, yeah, and, uh, who's going to, uh, you start, uh, 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 yeah, yeah, you want, for a watch, uh, for a hair, for a fact, um, again, or by that, it's, uh, for a hair. And, uh, so, uh, uh, on board, today, uh, call, uh, we use, uh. So, this is, they're gonna see this, they're gonna benefit from it, and you're going to, uh, oh.
Oh, floor recognizes Eric Burtonground.
Thank you, Speaker, Secretary, uh, Members of the Body, uh, we go J, Executive Legal, and Mr. Chairman. Uh, like, I'm a proponent of this, I think, uh, Bill, uh, it's long overdue, uh, it's, uh, my, my base, my, like, uh,
So that's Task 11 FYI. And then, you know, working on this, I think right now, you look at the schedule to hand out, we handed out yesterday, the budget pricing, July 1st, 2013 was basically the day that we were going to start all of this, but we only had 150 allocated to this from D and B. And from that time, we've been kind of moving forward, but from the tribe, we paid 235 to actually get some of the folks moving on this. If you look at the schedule, it's about a year and one quarter that it'll take to do all the Phase 2. And so, you know, we're, right now, we're about eight months behind schedule, according to the schedule that we have. And hopefully, we're, by this time next year, we'll have a better idea of what, you know, the surveys, the studies that are done, the maps, the plan, all of that will be in place. And give us a better idea of how much the actual costs would be for the hydro. And Mr. Goze is right, there's money already set aside there to do the hydro. And we have the exclusive right to do this. And this is just to get to the project off the ground, all the sampling, all those studies, all the plans, all the, you know, talking to the power purchasers, all of that is included in this Phase 2. So I think we're well off on our way and, you know, I'd like to see this hydroelectric project off the ground because, you know, I think all of us have been kind of hearing the same thing and seeing the same thing, that we only have one source of revenue. And, you know, that domestic source is declining for coal, so we need to diversify and to get other ways to bring in revenues. So, you know, I appreciate, you know, positive goal in these things.
Florida again, I got each other good today. They get to what I have, I go through ballet, they probably can't say my prayers. Floor is still open for proponents? Okay, moving on. Floor recognizes Chairman Natural Resources Infrastructure Conrad Stewart for the committee recommendation.
Honorable Speaker, Secretary members of the body, Mr. Chairman, guests, executive legal. March 18th, 2014, call a meeting to order natural resource committee invocation, the time was, if the meeting was called to order at 11:09 invocation by Senator Carlos Victor Nomi. Number of members present, there was a total of number at the beginning, and altogether we had a total of 19 at the meeting, including guests, and I believe there was about 14 members. And the proposed LR was the discussion topic, the hotel after bay, Phase 2 hydro project. And there was a farm and ranch report. The motion was made by Senator Burdenground, Eric Burdenground, seconded by Senator Pat Alden Jr. Question was called by Senator Carlson Gozehead, and the motion was to pass the LR to lease the 630K and transfer the money from the Economic Development Fund to the general fund. The vote was 14 yes, 0 no, 0 abstain. Motion passed for recommendation for approval. Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The floor is open for debate. Floor recognizes Conrad Stewart.
I don't, I just couldn't give a notice real quick on when we hit the appointment stage, we do have a clause we need to add to this that we, it's just, it's not very, it's not a big clause, it's just an add, an added to the end of the section one, so I just wanted to give notice.
Thank you. Floor recognizes Paul Young.
Thank you, Chair, executive, deal what? Well, I got, who would answer this question is, I got enough, that's 45 million, it's a big chunk of money to build this, as long as I say enough, I give you just projected income, that's how I got your.
Floor recognizes Bill Watt.
Thank you, Senator. From the initial feasibility study, which was completed about a year ago, it was projected out how to, you know, advertise that capital investment. Of course, some of it comes from the economic development fund in the water settlement, but the other 25 million or so that would have to be financed, it appears that there are good revenues to be able to cover that. The nice part about it is, once you pay back that loan in 15 years or so, it almost takes nothing to operate that facility, you know, it's almost all gravy. But the actual amount of revenue to cover those loan payments is going to be determined by what, how it can be marketed in the end. The best thing that was available about six or eight months ago, when I kind of stopped working on the project, was, I think, a Pacific corp down into Wyoming, under their, you know, required renewable portfolio, where they have actual published rates that they'll pay and all that. And that was pretty, that was a pretty good rate of return, and we have well covered the amount of the investment. Second best at that point was Northwest, you know, Northwestern Energy's renewable portfolio part, and their rates were a little bit lower, but it still covered it. So that will be part, I'm sure, of this final Phase 2 design, is actually identifying contracts and markets and maybe even putting those into place. I think those will go into place before any bank loan, any major loan to finance the whole facilities. That's, you know, that's a fundamental question in all this, and a good one. I hope I covered some of that for you from memory anyway.
And let me add, the 20 million is from the water settlement from the federal government, but there's another 15 million at the state that we could use for economic development. It's not earmarked for that project or this project, but there is 35 million sitting there. If we wanted to invest in here, it'd be $10 million that we go after for a loan to, you know, at the end of the day, which would be fairly minimal to pay back for the project this, with this size, nine megawatts. So that's 35 million sitting, sitting there as soon as we, you know, storage allocation agreement is completed. And so that's kind of FYI, it's not 20 million only, if there's another additional 15 million.
Thank you. Floor recognizes Eric Burdenground.
Thank you, Speaker, honorable, executive, Bill, so what's the projected number on that? Do you got a rough estimate on the revenue, or just for any amount?
Chairman is saying, taking three to four million a year would be the loan payment, and that sounds right. That's either the growth from the project or just the amount needed to do the loan, somewhere in that range. It's not a huge amount of money like some of the, you know, coal royalties and stuff. So it's, you know, maybe 15, 20% of that big. But that's, I think, order of magnitude, I believe it's, you know, employees, five or six people, doesn't, doesn't take much in the way of labor to run the place, but that would be year-round stuff to do as necessary there at the dam.
Floor recognizes Brendan.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, members of the body. This is probably going to be a question that's going to come up with my constituents and also the district, but the revenue that we do make later on down the road, is that going to go to the people, like per cap? That's one of the questions.
Floor recognizes Chairman Holka.
I think where the feasibility already says that it's going to make money, you know, low risk, and that's, you know, once construction starts, and we do go after, you know, the remaining balance of how much it's going to cost, you know, I'm not saying it's going to go here, there, you know, it's, right now, what the revenues that do come in, you know, there's like coal percentages that goes to per cap, percentage goes to the general fund. And that's the way it was set up when they did the deal. So I think this is an exclusive right that we have, nobody else has that right to do this. And that's a conversation we need to have, you know, further down the road, you know, I'm not saying it's for this or that, it's, it's a conversation that we need to have further down the road. Right now, it's, you know, doing all the studies, getting to the point where construction starts. Construction is about 55 people to 90 people for a year and a half, year and a half, basically. So after that is, you know, the actual purchase, selling of the power into the grid, and, you know, all of that, the revenues, when they start coming in, you know, in session, or if you want to do it now, it's kind of premature, but, you know, it's, the revenues, we could say education, public safety, purchase of land, or per cap, you know, it's kind of our, our revenue, if that's coming in, it's not, it's not going to be, Western World deciding how much we get, it's going to be total revenue for tribal. Nobody's, you know, we're not going to give up any percentage.
Brendan, I believe this would be an art wall, according with the executive, in regards to revenue for the future, but we probably have that in our hands, where we could designate a percentage to whatever we feel like is appropriate. Let's say we want economic development somewhere in the districts, let's say we want to use some of that money for different things, I believe. That would be our opportunity to earmark those monies for different projects, or for per cap, or whatever options that we want, working with the executive, you know, for the future. Floor recognizes Pat Alden.
Hey, you got it right, it's time. Thank you, Mr. Speaker, members of the body. No, I just had a kind of a simple question that I was going to maybe help the rest of the body out, also maybe Bill can answer, Chairman, we have what, nine megawatts, and it's equivalent to, can you give me a number, like, what we, I think we mentioned, 100,000 homes at first, or what does that cook maybe to compare to, how much homes are in buildings, and just to help everyone out on this, maybe that kind of, I know there's a lot of questions going around, so nine megawatts?
Floor recognizes Bill Watt to answer the question.
Best I can recall, I think it's, it's a little less than the total demand that Big Horn Electric has right now. And there's a way, I'm thinking 1,000 kilowatt, I don't know if you can figure that out, but I don't have those figured right here. But I think we're talking, and Yellowstone Electric is interested, part of it, Big Horn probably wouldn't want to have all of their power coming to this. So that's order of magnitude, you know, several thousand households, I think. But, you know, that's best I can think of right now. Apologize for not having all that handy.
Thank you. C C, did you have your hand up earlier? Oh, okay. Floor recognizes Carlson Gozehead.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, Secretary, Chairman, Vice Chair. And guess, you know, to answer a little further with the question with Brandon, Senator Plutlands, you know, the previous years, resolutions, if there was any development from our natural resources, the leadership would always designate where that money's going to go. So this one, right now, it's not a, this, we can still make, when we get to that point, and we have all the feasibility studies, how much revenue is going to bring in, then we can sit down and designate where this money is going to go. You know, for example, is like, the executive branch know where the needs most, a program that might need the most money, you know, we can designate that. So, you know, there'll be a lot of discussion, debate, you know, we'll get there, but these are the preliminaries, trying to get this off the ground, but, you know, it's going to be further down the road. And that's how it's all, it's like the timber goes to the tribal leases, they all go to the cap, as well as your coal, some of it go to the cap, some of it goes to the administration for the operation. And so that's how our government is set up, so all our natural resources, wherever that development comes, we're going to have to designate that somehow.
Thank you. Thank you, floor, recognizes David Wilson, Vice Chairman.
Okay, 1 megawatt of power, roughly 500 homes, depending on the amount of usage, and that 500 is just kind of an average, a rough estimate, saying, you know, I mean, you're not provided that you're not, you know, burning rock, welding 24 hours, seven days a week, you know, I mean, that's roughly 500 homes, times nine, you've got nine megawatts, that's what, about 4,500 homes, roughly.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Floor is still open for debate? Okay, we'll move on to amendments, and I believe Senator Conrad Stewart has an amendment we just talked about earlier. Floor recognizes Conrad Stewart.
Honorable Speaker, Secretary, Vice Chairman, Chairman, members of the body, and guests. Section 1, after, now therefore be resolved, we need to just add the phrase here, right after the Phase 2, the hotel after bay, hydroelectric project, comma, quotation, is hereby approved. We need to add that, that's included in there to show that it was approved, so. It's hereby approved. It's my motion, my, for my amendment.
Need a second? Second by Eric Burdenground. All in favor, raise your hands. 15, 15-0-0. Any more amendments? Okay, moving on. Need a second reading? Floor recognizes Conrad Stewart.
Honorable Speaker, at this time, I want to waive second reading with amendments, and moving to final roll call vote. Make that motion.
Need a second? Second by Eric Burdenground. All in favor, raise your hands. Okay, moving on to final roll call vote, and I'll start with... Correction on the vote, there was 14, not 15. Okay, moving on to final roll call vote, start with...
Aaron's Black Lodge, yes.
Rogers, yes.
Stewart, yes.
Bill, yes.
Burdenground, yes.
Alden, yes.
Spandor, yes.
De Crane, yes.
Gozehead, yes.
Goodluck, yes.
Stewart, yes.
Realbert, yes.
Old Crook, yes.
Secretary was telling. 14-0-0. The LR is passed.
Moving on to the rest of the agenda, says other business, in case there's other businesses that need to be made, are there any motions for any kind of LRs or businesses? There is, so, moving on to announcements, just for the record, Vice Houghton did call him, said he had an appointment, and sort of lucky, our Costa, cover, came in earlier, so that we wouldn't be able to make it. So any announcements from anyone? We scheduled lunch for one, because there was always a crowd, we're done pretty early, Jackie, get a little bit into there, I should say. Okay. Okay, need a motion adjourned?
Real quick, I have an announcement.
Okay.
Either Tuesday or Wednesday, I'll get it out here, we're going to look at the calendar, but the architect's here for the, he'll be here for the arbor, and so we'll have an infrastructure meeting, and we'll visit with the architect. I don't know if there's going to be a site visit included, but we'll, we'll have that on either Tuesday or Wednesday, depending on the schedule, and so I'll let Jackie know she can send it out.
Thank you. Floor, this, Eric Burdenground. Make a motion.
We got another announcement. Just come to my attention, I guess, Saturday at the fairgrounds, Big Horn County co-ops having their election for the board, Board of Trustees, so.
Do you know who the nominees are?
We don't have it, but we'll send it out, and I don't know if we can nominate right on the spot.
Floor recognizes Pat.
Also, in the same matter, Friday is 21st, right? 21st, they're having that Harden High School, it's an open forum for superintendent, the next superintendent, it's kind of their interviewing process, and it's open to the public, so if anyone's interested in on that, that's Friday, 21st, I believe.
Thank you, floor recognizes Carlson Gozehead. Didn't meet over the top.
Top should have, Mr. Speaker, Jackie, there's a meeting, right? Corporation codes. Okay. We need to work on these corporation codes, on the structure, and we need to, and I know that we haven't got to that, I know that, we really need to, your input, we got to have a discussion, and we need to move on those, because, and so we need to make some decisions on that, structure on the board, and move forward. And I think we were kind of leaning more towards the Seminoles, and, and you know that, the other day, you know, the casino on the other side of the, the timing is there, this is one of the things, we got to get in there, roll up your sleeves, and make some decisions.
Floor, this is Chairman, who cut up?
There was a question, what's the next step after this Phase 2? Phase 2 fully funded 1.2, like a design, all the architectural, the designing, the surveys, deal technical, all of that will happen within the year. So I think next year, or, you know, a little after, I'd say about May next year, we'll be ready for construction. And about then, we should have the storage allocation agreement wrapped up, and, you know, the release of the 15 minute from the state. So all of this is about a year out, and with all the studies that have, has to be done with BOR at the site, and so about next May, we should have groundbreaking for construction and that kind of going, and a year out from there would be actual selling of the power. It's, we're on the way to, you know, this kind of gets you the design, you know, if you're going to build a building, you know, you have to have the design, the order electrical and all that stuff goes, so it's kind of pre-engineering and design, and then the actual construction. So that's sort of where we're at now. And the storage allocation agreement, we are negotiating with BOR, and that's, we're moving forward with that, and we own all the storage behind the dam, and when it passes through those turbines, we asked BOR, and I even asked up the DC level of BOR, that, you know, if we're the ones moving those turbines with our water, then we should be compensated for, they call it the toll, tolling or toll fee, and they didn't disagree, so that's what we're working on, and hopefully, you know, we get that tolling, and that's another source of revenue that, you know, we should have been getting at the beginning when the dam was built, we never, now we're, we're putting that in agreement, so that we do get compensated for that, so that's assumption that we're working on under storage And I think as far as the corporation code, I think we're about ready, and then we had a meeting with a company out of Buffalo, New York, Delaware North, they're out here, CG calls them Shabat, he's, works with that company, and anyway, when we had the site visits, they went back and emailed back the next day and said, they're interested in doing a resort, kind of a destination resort, at any one of those locations, I think they're kind of interested more in the second site we visited, which is ranch, but, you know, we're going to start talking to them here shortly, and what we're waiting for is the feasibility study that was, that's being done by Klaus Robinson, so that's, I think they felt sorry for us, because we had small pops and small sandwiches, and so, so they're going to be here after the feasibility is done, you know, come out, they'll go get them.
Thanks, Chairman. That guy's name's Allah Shabat. One Delaware group. Darcy fed him swine. Okay, Eric, you're ready for your motion now.
I didn't want more nonsense tomorrow spring, my energy bar goes, just to be safe out there, I was just so, bless you all, we'll solve, be safe out there, I had to make them useful.
Motion by Eric Burdenground. For Chairman, need a second? Second by Tyson Blue, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, hey, we, no, Pat.